All right, I'll go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the City Council for November 20th, 2023. I spoke with Councilmember Mazzoni and Shin. Both were unable to attend for other obligations. At this time, Councilmember Gardner will be leading us in invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Our Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this day, Lord. We're thankful, even though we've enjoyed the warm temperatures of the summer and the fall, God, we're thankful for the change in seasons and the rain that we've had today. We're thankful that we can be in this community of Maumell and enjoy the beautiful colors and the trees that we get to enjoy here in our city, God. We just pray tonight that with the decisions that we make, that we will have wisdom and discernment over all the matters that we've been charged with taking care of for the city, God. We just ask for wisdom in all the things that we do, Father. We're thankful for all those that are serving the city day in and day out and keeping us safe and keeping everything running smoothly, Lord. We just truly are blessed to be able to enjoy this place. Father, we ask that you bless us this evening and this week and help us to remember all the good things that you do each and every day for us, Lord. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Gardner. Next item of business is the approval of the minutes of the November 6 regular meeting. Y'all received a copy of that in the council packet. I'll go ahead and open the floor for discussion. I've got a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I wanted to make a motion here to amend the minutes. Under public comments, it says here Mike Chastain asked about the legislative audit and trying to see if we can't get our audits up to date. And he also, I went back and looked because I was thinking he had talked about the Park on the River too, and he did. He said he also asked about whether the city has made an attempt to collect money owed from Team Summit on Park on the River and why the city would renew a management agreement with the same entity that still owes the city money. And so I wanted to make a motion to amend the minutes to include that. I just think that's very important. We need to have that in the minutes. So hereby I make a motion to make that amendment. Here's the wording. I'll pass it up to the city clerk.
A motion and a second to add under Mr. Chastain's comments. Quote, "Mr. Chastain also asked about whether the city had made an attempt to collect money owed from Team Summit on Park on the River and why the city would renew a management agreement with the same entity that still owes the city money." Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. And I believe someone else had a, their button was lit up, but it's not now. Did anyone else have a comment on this side? Okay, with that, I've got a motion and a second to approve the minutes as amended. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. We will move on to, uh-oh. If you'll give me just a minute. Looks like I lost the live stream. Okay, it looks like we are back online. It has gone so long since we've had any glitches. I've barely paid attention to it. I'm not sure when it went out. A full copy of the minutes or the meeting will be uploaded to YouTube here hopefully this week. But we're good to go. We'll move on to public comments at this time. I have public comment cards. I'll call you down in the order that they are received. And when you get here, please just state your name and address, and you have three minutes. First up is Gary Holt. Come on down.
My name is Gary Holt. I live at 22 South Shore Cove here in Maumell. I want to talk about reinstating the pit bull ban. I've been an attorney for 42 years. I've represented about four pit bull attacks in the past. One of them was in Little Rock where a dog jumped out of a car in a parking lot, bit a man's nose off. Another is where a dog attacked an elderly woman and grieved her, and she lost four fingers. I currently have two active pit bull cases in North Little Rock. So I speak from some experience. I'm not here to talk about that experience today. I've got some hard statistics. It's not hearsay. It's not folklore. It's hard statistics, and I invite anybody to check. Worldwide, there are 20 countries that totally ban pit bulls. In the United States, there are 14 states that ban pit bulls. In Arkansas, there are 13 cities and all of Garland County that bans pit bulls. Pit bulls attack mostly children and the elderly. There are 3,397 recorded attacks from pit bulls. There are 295 recorded deaths from pit bull attacks. Pit bull attacks are 213% more serious injury than other cases. I'm not here because I've got a financial interest. I'm here, I've been a resident in Maumell since 1982. And a client came to me. She does not have a case because, God bless her, she avoided serious injury barely. But I'm here to ask this panel to do what's right and protect the citizens of Maumell.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Alan Bruce Wagner. Come on down. Name and address for the record, sir.
Alan Bruce Wagner, 36 Chico Drive. I am here in support of the ban on the pit bulls. I cannot bring facts and figures at this point in time with this. Mr. Holt has done a very good job with that. But if we're, if we can't reinstitute the ban, what I ask for is hard enforcement of the law we have on here about the pits and dangerous dogs in the area. I believe the lady sitting here, Ms. Linda, that will be speaking in a moment, was attacked by one or two at her house. I believe that those pits were quarantined, which they should have been, and that's great for the law. But I also believe that reading the last minutes of the last meeting, the statement was made that those pits were here illegally in the first place. So what kind of enforcement was placed upon the people after that was done? Because if they're here illegally in the first place, then something needs to be done about that from that standpoint. So it's important, until we get this pit bull ban rule settled, and I am for the ban, I like to get them out of here because I've had trouble with pits in the past in other arenas. Let's enforce the law aggressively that we have on the books, whether they're here illegally or illegally, and what's being reported. I think that also needs to be expanded a little bit into the arena of dogs that are in here, even if they're not pits, but are not being, shall we say, correctly handled, i.e. someone that has an excess number in their fence or whatever. They're not licensed, they're not shot, I mean, they're not vaccinated and so on, from the statement standpoint. If those are reported, we need to aggressively address that also. So that's what I'm saying. I like the ban to be back. I can't support it with stats like Mr. Holt did right now. But until we have that and we can put the ban back in place, my request is aggressively enforce the rules we have regarding dangerous dogs and the care and maintenance of the animals inside the city limits of Maumell. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have a public comment card from Linda Keesey. Hopefully I said that right.
Yeah.
Thank you. Come on down. Name and address for the record, please.
Linda Keesey, and I live at 4604 Place. And I'm the one that was bit. Okay, and I moved to Maumell because I felt it was safe. I'm going to read this because I'm very nervous about this. I could walk out my front door and take my grandchildren and now my great-grandchildren on a walk. This is no longer true for me. I don't walk out of my house without pepper spray. On October 22nd, at 5:57 PM, I was attacked by two pit bulls as I was going into my front door. I was bitten on my left leg above my ankle, which caused prolonged medication and trauma to my leg, which has also caused emotional trauma and fear. Since the dogs have been placed back with the owner, five doors down from me, I no longer feel safe walking my dog. I want to feel safe again, and I want the city to reinstate the dog breed ban. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. I have a public comment form from Robert Kennedy. Come on down. Name and address for the record, please.
Robert Kennedy, 19 Park Ridge. Thank y'all for hitting me tonight. Wanted to come to y'all about the crime at Jess Odom Community Center, specifically at the Aquatic Center over the past three summers. I don't have hard statistics, but I'm pretty much down there every evening and on the weekends, and it seems like the past three summers, the crime has gotten more frequent. And we're talking crime in broad daylight. Now, from what I gather, there's no murders or kills or hurts, but people's cars are broken into in broad daylight from noon to 3, 4 PM. I've heard several ideas pitched over time from undercover police to cameras. And I know, you know, our police department needs to be there for emergencies. And I'm also a believer in, you know, calling them for additional patrols during special events. But I also understand that there's a proposal in the budget for next year to have a camera system put in. And I'm here to tell you, I love that. I'm asking each of the council members for your vote on that in the spring. I've heard, or in December, sir, when it comes to vote. I've heard several things about in Little Rock, you know, we just put signs up reminding people to put your objects up in your car. You know, that's why we don't live in Little Rock. We live in Maumell where it's safe, and I want to keep it safe. And I know the cameras probably aren't going to be the exact cure for it all, but I believe it'll help and it'll give our police department, you know, additional vision, additional, I guess, witness. Maybe we can catch a few of these bad guys and lock them up and maybe deter most of it. But anyway, thank y'all for hearing me. I'm asking for your vote in December for that, please. Let's keep our city safe. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have a council member comment from... Councilmember Mosley.
Yeah, I wanted to, I wanted to address the subject on the pit bulls here. I fought very hard to keep the pit bull ban from being lifted two or three years ago. I don't know if you remember that. And I have tried to reinstate it, I think, twice. Reinstate the ban twice. Unfortunately, we've got a very solid group on the council. There's probably six members that are there, and they're there to protect the pit bulls. Probably the best thing you could do is at, at election time is to make a point of saying who supports having pit bulls here in Maumell and then trying to get them out of office. I'd be happy to maybe try to reinstate that ban if you all would come forward and maybe work with me and that sort of thing and, and at least stand up and support a ban again. We've had, we had a gentleman that was hurt very badly. I think he got a $1 million settlement from it, or at least a judgment. Had a woman that was attacked. She was fostering one, I think, and she was attacked, hurt very badly, and now you've been attacked. Seems like every six months. I'm just waiting for a small child to be bitten, and I think at that point, even those on the council that support having pit bulls here might change their mind. So, anyway, I'd be happy to talk to you afterwards. I've got a business card. If you leave before the meeting, you can grab it and give me a call. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. With that, we'll move on to financial statement review. Beatrice, come on down.
Yes, hello. Good afternoon. Well, we are going to review October. Let's go for the general fund. Talking about revenue, we are on budget. We review, and actually, we are going to be a little bit above the budget. We still have two months to go, and I will make the accrual very soon because we register on a cash basis month after month, and in December, we made the accrual. Okay? So we are okay in revenue. So nothing to report on the revenue for 2023. Then talking about, next page, please. Talking about expenditures, here we just, I just wanted to comment that it looks pretty good because most of the expenses have kept the budget that we have. Now we are reviewing, because we are also working in budget 2024, so I go back, we go back a little bit in 2023. So we are reviewing together with the teams, like utilities, you know, electricity and water and, and even telephone here because they have increased for the city. And of course, I have, we have to evaluate them for 2024. So we realize that for '23, we are going to be a little short on those expenses. But just wanted to report to you that that's the main expense that I found like we have a, it's not a surprise, but it will be out of budget for 2023. Other than that, we are okay. We are also started doing all the, all the purchase orders for the expenses that are committed. Sorry about that. For the expenses that are committed, so I don't see any other issue on expenditures for the general fund. In the next page, I presented for you the, the fund balance. The fund balance, as we all know, has to be 20% of the operational expenses, is 3.4 million. So, and we have 13.7 million in the general fund. So we are 10.3 million above that requirement. So we are okay. We continue with good health in the general fund balance. Our next fund is the street funds, and we are okay in the street fund. I think that we are doing very good on budget. Also, the people already presented their purchase orders, so we'll be okay on, on the streets. Nothing to report here. And we also evaluated the expenses and revenue for 2024. Then the next page, I'm sorry about that. It's been very cold for me. And the next one, let's talk about the sanitation fund. In the sanitation fund, thank you very much. In the sanitation fund, we already started a study, well, the mayor started a study based on the analysis we have made before. So you know, we are a little short, but I don't think it's nothing to do for 2023 budget because it's already done and we already spent. We just need to keep an eye on the fund balance in order we, we keep a fund. And our fund is 1 million. So I consider, in my opinion, we are okay there with the, with the study that is being performed by, by the mayor and, and the chief of staff. I think that we will do better next year based on whatever is presented to you. And then in our highlights, well, today, I have good news because the, the 2024 budget, it is in progress, and we, it's going to be delivered for you very soon, presented. We already have the calendar. Mayor, I don't know if you are going to talk a little bit about that, but everything will be on time. In December, we will be complete for you. And then the audit 2021, Mr. Mosley and everybody, we, we finished, we finished ACFR for 2021. Also, it's going to be presented by the auditors to you on the next December 4. So everything here is good news, and Mayor, if you want to...
Really quickly, the budget will be passed out on December 4 and then presented formally with the presentation at the second meeting in December.
And also in that meeting, the audit 2021 ACFR report will be presented.
Yes.
Okay, so we are okay. So I really think it's good news for the finance department because in 2024, we will be able, in my plan, to finish 2022 audit during the first six months, and we will be on time if we can commit on that. And then we are, we catch up. So that's all for today, if you have any questions.
Thank you. And just a quick follow-up with the audit. We had a, it's already gone through the concurrence, which is where the auditors send it to another sort of branch in their internal, the concurrence is there, and we had a draft that we were considering passing out. We've always just given the final report, and then at the following meeting, had the formal presentation. And I didn't really like the idea of giving a draft that was going to change in one form or another prior to submission, even if it was just formatting things. So we backed that up to the audit being passed out at the first meeting in December, and that should be the final draft that will then be discussed and voted on at the following meeting. Councilmember comments? Councilmember Gronwald?
I've got two quick questions for you. We pay so much attention to our spending, which we should, but I was curious because it looks like happy numbers to me in the investment earnings.
Yes.
Considerably higher than last year. Can you tell me what the difference is? I think I know, but I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I, you know, sorry, Mayor. I like to brag.
Yeah, I know. There's one to brag about.
Okay, well, this is that the money was not managed properly before, so we, the finance team and myself, we made to the bank, we went to the bank, we make a negotiation, and it started paying on interest. 3% since I started in, in March, they started paying us like in May, the 3% for the money that we have in the funds. So it's cash. So it was their seat without generating interest. So yes, this is the reason that we, we are generating more revenue.
That's, that's what I thought. So I just wanted to take that opportunity to say kudos because that's significant. My second question, what, you'll have to remind me, what is included in the miscellaneous revenue?
Well, miscellaneous revenue is when we sell, sell an asset or we have a different kind of revenue, like, for example, in the, I, I don't know, you can help me a little bit here, but is any extraordinary revenue that the different departments collect that is not a tax? And we just register like a revenue. We could be also insurance that we recover. I don't know, I don't have too many on mine because it's not even much, if you notice. Most of it is insurance, that we have most of our assets under insurance, and if a crash happens, that happens in the police department, we recover the insurance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, sir. Let me, let me make sure I understand when the auditors are actually going to be here to present the audit and answer questions and that sort of thing.
The schedule is second meeting in December. First meeting, first meeting in December, they pass out the book or I pass out the book, and then the second meeting in December is when they give their presentation.
Will they, will they actually be here on the 4th, or will you just be passing?
Just passing out the books then.
Okay. Yeah, I did talk to the auditors today. They pretty much said the same thing you all did, that they had forwarded the draft over to staff, and they were waiting on them to send back their comments and that sort of thing. He said that was the only thing they were waiting on at this point, just to hear back from you guys. So it looks like...
That was done because that's why they were able to produce the draft. So yes, that was all done. Actually, that's why I had the good news because we were able to deliver everything to them, and they can issue their report. They cannot deliver it if they don't have everything. So for now, we deliver everything, they issue the draft, and as the mayor says, we didn't want to pass the draft today because they are going to print it for us. That was the only reason.
Okay, I think we said the same thing. I have, I still have a hard time understanding you, but I think we said the same thing. I did, you know, last, last meeting, there was some discussion as to whether there's when we get behind on audits, as to whether our turnback money becomes in jeopardy. And I did call State Rep. David Ray today and asked him to check into that, to see if that was true or not. And he sent me some information today. I forwarded some information on to the city attorney where he referenced a House Bill 1571 that apparently our turnback revenue will become affected, I think, by, by a lack of, by being 18 months overdue. And, and so this, this won't bother us for 2021, but if 2022 is not done by next June 30, then we may, we may have a problem on that. But I would like to see the city attorney kind of check that out and make sure both, Mr. Ray and myself are reading that correctly. And that's, that's all I've got.
Thank you. After that meeting, I did the same thing, after the meeting where you mentioned that I contacted Representative Ray also and got some information. I believe the city attorney was researching it. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes. So under Act 453 of 2023, the city's report must be filed with legislative audit within 18 years of the end of the fiscal year?
18 months.
18 months.
I was like, we can make 18 years.
Or the turnback funds will be held in escrow. Funds held in escrow for at least 12 months are forfeited. This law goes into effect June 30 of 2024. So that is when it will, that's when it goes into effect.
Gotcha. Yeah, thank you. Any additional questions or discussion on the financial statement? If not, I'd entertain a motion to accept. I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sousa. With that, we will move on to procedural motion. At this time, I entertain a motion to have all ordinances. Councilmember Holt?
Mr. Mayor, may I be granted 37ths to make a comment to the folks who spoke? I was not aware they were going to. I was not prepared. Just 20 seconds now.
Certainly, yes, sir.
Government is owned by the people. I can tell you from this council and the conflict that we went through before, this council is not going to approve or remit the ban. The only way it's going to happen is that the people themselves get together and buy and group together and let the people know that you elected them. You also have the power to recall them, including me and everybody else. It is going to have to come from the people at large because this council is, there is a great influence by called friends of the, of the animals. the Animals, and they are pit bull people. And it is a notable strength. So I won't go any further because I promised 30 seconds, but it it will have to come from your strength, and I encourage you to do so. But it will not come from this council. They are not going to do it. But I appreciate you being here and I support you 100% like my other councilmember. Mosley, I'll be every step with you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only.
Still moved?
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Moving on to unfinished business, the first time of unfinished business is the third reading of ordinance 1098, amending a preliminary plat procedure. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1098, an ordinance to amend the procedure for submitting final preliminary plats and subdivisions and for other purposes.
Motion to your pre-ordinance 1098?
Got a motion, a second, any discussion on that? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gronwald?
Yes.
Councilmember Gartner?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Motion carries. With that, we will move on to the third reading of ordinance 1099 to adopt governing professional services. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1099, an ordinance to adopt Mammell City Code 2-441, governing designated professional services and for other purposes.
Councilmember Tierney?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 1099 governing the designation of professional services.
I've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gronwald?
Yes.
Councilmember Gartner?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance 1099 is adopted. With that, we will move on to the second reading of ordinance 1100, accepting annexation of land. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1100, an ordinance accepting the annexation of land commonly known as the Ghostin LLC property, to be entitled the Ghostin LLC annexation to the City of Mammell, Arkansas, and making the Ghostin LLC a part of the City of Mammell, designating the same land for inclusion in Ward 4 and for other purposes.
Thank you. This is on second reading. I'll go ahead and open the floor for discussion. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I'm just going to reiterate that I'll be a no vote on this. I I mean, I'm happy to continue to build houses within the original boundaries of Mammell, but I don't think we need to be going looking for new places to build houses outside of Mammell. I don't think it does the residents any good at this community. And I'm more than happy to annex anything that's got some commercial. I want to see some tax revenue. And that's, you know, that that should be our impetus for when we annex. We we annexed all that land to go out to the third entrance with the idea of getting some revenue out there, some commercial, some retail and stuff like that. And it really hasn't come about and we've got more houses out there to serve. And there's a lot of clamoring for new fire stations and more things to spend money on. So anyway, I'll be a no vote on that. Thank you.
Any additional comments? Seeing none, this will be on third reading at the next council meeting, which brings us to the second reading of ordinance 1101, amending the Mammell Land Use Plan and Map. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1101, an ordinance amending the Mammell Land Use Plan and Map and for other purposes.
All right, I'll go ahead and open the floor for discussion. Seeing no comments, this will be on third reading at the next city council meeting, which brings us to ordinance 1102, amending the city zoning map. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1102, an ordinance amending the Mammell Zoning Map and for other purposes.
I'll go ahead and open the floor for discussion. Seeing none, this will be on third reading at the next city council meeting. That brings us to agenda item F on unfinished business, Park on the River. Was that there, Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, thank you very much. Yeah, it has to have this on the agenda so that the public can see the the memos that are included at the end of this packet. I was looking for them there in the middle of the packet. It turns out there at the end, but they're there. And wanted to also discuss that memo. But before we do that, I was wanting to ask the city attorney. In our last meeting, we had discussed the first memo in which city attorney had asked or recommended that we we bill for back money on the Park on the River for the time that they did not pay under the contract and also when there was no contract and to bill them a reasonable amount under a under a legal theory. And so anyway, I wanted to ask the city attorney Thornton to give us an update on the billing. And I know he and Ms. Sousa were going to get together and try to start working up some billing and get get that done because time is kind of the essence.
Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you. Yes, sir. I did email the council members this afternoon a spreadsheet I did get with Ms. Sousa. I got the utility bill. So under the 2015 contract, the rent was calculated through a formula. You will recall it was $1,000 plus utilities for the property plus one quarter of Team Summit's revenue. I think it said net revenue. I did get with Ms. Sousa and she gave me all the utility bills for the entire period of time from May 2019 through March of 2023 for the property. I plugged that into a spreadsheet. And I also got the events that were listed on the Parks and Rec calendar, and I've listed all of those on the spreadsheet. I did request revenue figures from Timmons for Team Summit, and she said she was swamped with work through the because of the holiday season, but she would get that for me December 23 or after December 23, excuse me. I don't think we're quite under the clock. I did tell the council in one of my memos that unjust enrichment has a three-year statute of limitations. I didn't show any events at all from December of 2020 through Jan through February of 2021. So I don't think we're under the gun on that. But yes, and in my spreadsheet, I calculated what I would suggest invoicing for and right, I should say, the maximum that I think could be invoiced from the period that was under contract. It would be $27,000 and change plus one quarter of revenue for those months. And there's been discussions several times about cutting part of that due to COVID because, as we know, COVID basically prevented events from taking place. And I think it was probably contemplated under the 2015 lease agreement that there would be events taking place. And then for the second period of time, from December of 2020 through March of 2023, I found 13 to 18 different events. So there were only 13 to 18 different days that the property was even used during that period of time. And I, for each of those months, I prorated the number of days per month. And for that period of time, depending on the number of events, it would be $861 plus one quarter of revenue. That would be the maximum that I would suggest invoicing for. I don't think it's so in other words, just to take an example, in April of '22, the calendar showed three events taking place. So three days, it was used out of the entire month. For the rest of the month, the city, of course, had free use of the property. So I don't think it's fair to invoice her as if she had the right to use it for the entire month if she only used it for three days. Again, it would be different if it were under contract. If it were under contract, that she had the right to use the property for the whole month, well, then that's just bargaining for. But we're talking about unjust enrichment. We're not talking about breach of contract. So that's why you have the the lower figure for the the second period of time. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I'm just now looking at the schedule the first time. I didn't check my alderman email this afternoon, so I hadn't seen this before tonight. So I guess I'm seeing here, I was looking for totals down there at the bottom. It seems to me that we should be billing for $1,000 for any at least any month that she had events. And it doesn't look like you're doing that. I may have to call you on the phone and and get a better clarification. But is that is that correct?
That's correct.
You aren't billing any of those 1,000s?
Because the way I look at it, under the second period of time, when we're not under contract, see, it would be different if, for example, if the lease agreement said, well, this converts to month to month after the expiration. But the lease agreement specifically said, this agreement is not going to continue unless the city council explicitly readopts it, as we know that didn't happen. So she used the property, not under contract, and under the theory of unjust enrichment, she should compensate the city for that. She didn't have the right to use the during this entire period of time, the city had full legal right to use the property. And we didn't, but we could have. As soon as the note as soon as the 2015 lease agreement was up, we could have gone, we could have signed a new lease agreement with somebody else. We could have re-signed, you know, we could have done whatever we wanted. But for example, if in April of '22, she only used the property for three days, I don't think it's fair to invoice her as if she had the right to use the property for the whole month. That's my theory.
I'll 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 consider your arguments here. I the way I look at it, she did not vacate the premises the way she was supposed to at the end of the of the original lease and continued to occupy. So I I it appears to me that this that the city didn't have the ability to rent it out to anybody else. So it would appear to me that the $1,000 a month would apply for every month and and the utilities. So, you know, that would be my argument. I'd, you know, that's two and a half years worth of stuff for you're saying.
And she used it maybe 18 days, judging by the calendar entries, off of two and a half years. And I I agree with you that if we had a new lessee in place, if we had somebody we wanted to do an agreement with, we had a contract with, and if her using the property impeded that contract, yes, then we might be able to seek additional damages. But we didn't have anybody like that. She wasn't preventing us, except on these days. She wasn't preventing us from using the property at all, except on these days. So that's the impediment I think we would have trying to recover for additional money.
Well, Mr. Mr. Mayor and Ms. City Clerk, were you all aware that the city had the ability to to lease that out to somebody else during that period of time?
I had thought, no, not directly. I know that the city can use that facility basically whenever we want. Team Summit has always provided for that, and I believe there's even provisions in the contract. But no, I didn't know it wasn't under contract at that time. I had, you know, during COVID, I recall someone somewhere saying something about we need to get this back under contract. The contract has expired. At that time, it was COVID and there was no events going on anywhere for anything. And it was a little bit different time. So short of that, I had no knowledge that, you know, by the time COVID got over with, and then, yeah, I didn't, it was never, no one came up to me and said, the contract is now expired. You can use the facility whenever you want, if you're asking for that level of clarity.
Well, if if you were aware that the contract had expired and she was still using the facility, shouldn't you have done something on that contract, notified the council?
Sure, yeah. So I would encourage you to think back to that timeframe. There were no events going on at that time. It was not a top priority at that point in time. We were spending hours a day keeping up with health stats, dealing with how we were that timeframe was a different timeframe. By the time that ended, it was not, I just forgot. I it was not a big talking point. There was not a big issue. But I've said before, I've, you know, it was it was out of contract and ultimately that falls on my shoulders for making sure that it was in contract. And that I just didn't do that.
My guess is that you also that you should for for a mayor that is in the who understands the details of everything that goes on around here, that can can go on for long periods of time, about every deal of the Crystal Hill Road problem and everything else. I I again failed. You should have this. The city has erred here significantly by allowing her to occupy that and not get her out of there. The contract was very clear that she was supposed to to leave. So she stayed. She should be liable for the contractual terms of that agreement that was in place. Otherwise, you should have come to the council. And I have a feeling both you all knew that this thing had expired and you did not come to the council and let us know. And it doesn't look good, again, because the city clerk is related to the lady that owns Team Summit. You should have. This is on you. You brought this on yourself.
Thank you, sir. I think I think I just said that, yeah.
Yeah, well, it's more than you just taking responsibility.
One of the frustrating things is meeting after meeting after meeting. I come in and say that, listen, as the chief elected officer of the City of Mammell, we have a multitude of contracts. This was one of the contracts. We had a we didn't have a system set up where I could figure that out. We've built that system so that now we would see the lack of revenue there. And but time and time again, I come in and say that ultimately, this was a this falls under my umbrella and I am responsible for that having not occurred. And so I'll repeat the same thing at the next meeting when you proceed to.
And I may and I may just do that, too, Mr. Mayor and Ms. City Clerk.
I'm sure you will.
You all have really blown this off. You have not, once this happened, you didn't proceed to do anything either. You just let it go.
No, that is not accurate.
It wasn't until we had that meeting in March where we really found out what was going on.
That was we discussed this in the budget meetings last year, Councilmember Mosley.
It's because I brought it up. I asked about it, but you were perfectly aware of it.
And 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 you discussed it because of the changes that we put in place that allowed that information to be that made that information visible to not only you and to me.
I'm going to drop it for now. But again, I'm going to I'm going to conserve Mr. Thornton's argument here and I may go visit with him because he may have a very, he may be able to convince me that that's right. But otherwise, we'll disagree on this. Okay, that's so so at this point, we're waiting for some statements from Ms. Timmons on the only on that one year and a half. Is that correct?
That would be revenue for the entire period.
For the entire period. We'll need to see the the net revenue. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. So if you're not, if you if you don't believe. So if you're not, if you, if you don't believe we're going to lose our, our rights here, I, I would have liked to have moved this along faster. Okay, let's talk about, let's talk about the, your memo that you wrote, that you passed out right before last meeting, talking about the, what laws might have been broken on this, on this thing. Can you give us a, just an overall discussion of, of what you wrote in this memo and, and emphasize that it's a preliminary in nature that we're waiting on a couple of things?
Yes, sir. So, I'm sorry. So you, you had sent me an email asking if, you listed a bunch of different laws and you asked me whether they had been violated. And you also told me that you had asked the auditors to look into this. And that's the reason my answers to you are preliminary, is that I'm interested to see what, if anything, they say. If you're asking like a, as a basic matter, whether any laws were broken, no, at this time, I haven't seen that any laws have been broken. By all accounts, it was overlooked as, as Mayor Norris has, has taken responsibility for many, many times since the beginning. And that's why I'm recommending that the city try to negotiate payment to recoup the unpaid rent.
Okay. As I, as I understand it, it's very imperative that we pursue collection of, of the, the money or it would possibly, as you, I think, mentioned, complicate things and make it, it might expose us to liability, I assume, so.
I'm, I'm not sure. I, I think it's the proper thing to do. As we all know, we're fiduciaries of the public's money, city government is, every level of government is. So we have a responsibility to act responsibly. And when we discover that we haven't invoiced pursuant to a valid contract, yes, I think we should go back. That, that was the basis of my recommendation. That was the, Mayor Norris had asked me for the first memorandum for the city's legal options and for my advice, and that's why I recommended to him.
And also, also, we need to find out what exactly happened. And, and we've asked the auditors to kind of check into it and give us, hopefully tell us what happened.
I understand you have, yes, sir.
And so we're, we're kind of waiting on that too. That's important, is that correct?
Um, I mean.
As far as your memo, I mean, it's, it's one reason.
My answers are preliminary because I think they're better equipped to do that kind of, I, I don't know, accounting. I'm not an accountant.
All right.
Of course, it's all going back several years. So I, they're already looking for the books, you know.
The whole idea was to get somebody who was objective and independent to take a look at it and we're hopefully going to get something on that.
Although I, I have no reason to doubt what I've heard so far, for the record.
Okay.
Madam City Clerk?
I just want to go on the record. Councilmember Mosley, you have indicated on several occasions that I have done something improper. In office, I, again, for the record, I do not handle the day-to-day financial transactions that go with, that go on during the, the financial process in our finance department. In addition to that, I have nothing to do with the park on the river because of my relationship with the leasing. So I'll say this again, and I stated it before you and I have even had a conversation. I have nothing to do with the billing for Park on the River. I have nothing to do with the rentals. I have no idea when there is an event going on at that place. We don't discuss it because I take my oath of office incredibly serious. You, as part of the governing body that's been here since the inception of the contract, were aware every step of the way, what was going on. It's your responsibility because you approved it to pay attention to what is going on. I would like you not to accuse me of doing something improper when I have stated again and again that I do not have anything to do with the day-to-day operations of the finance department. That's not my responsibility, nor has it ever been. And I would like for you to stop accusing me of something so improper.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to respond.
Councilmember Mosley?
Uh, yes. You are the treasurer, is that correct? You are, you are over the accounting department. There is a line that comes from you over the accounting department, is that correct?
My fiduciary responsibilities as the treasurer are to issue disbursements for tax payments, period. I do have supervisory responsibilities, which are with the mayor. That is in name only. My job responsibilities, if you look at the state statute, it's there. Those aren't my job responsibilities. It's your responsibility as part of the governing body to pay attention to the money that you approve.
That's what we're talking about.
And the, and the contracts. But do not include me in, in this situation. You're tarnishing my reputation. I work very hard to do things above board. I pay attention to all of the laws and I make sure that I adhere to all the responsibilities that I have been tasked with. I do not take it lightly, the accusations you're making about my professional character. If you have a conversation and you don't understand something, I'll be happy to explain it to you, but for you to bring it as you are, I don't understand your, your, your goal, right? Like, we want to get our finances to a healthy place and on time. The division that you're causing, the time that you're taking away from staff to give you information that we've repeatedly given you, it's divisive, it's not productive, and we're not getting anywhere.
Ms. City Clerk, were you aware, were you aware that the billing was not taking place? Were you aware?
Again, I do not have anything to do with.
I know you don't have anything to do with day-to-day billing, but.
Why would I? This isn't productive. The back and forth, the sparring, it's not productive.
Well, I, I wanted to get that on the table. You were not aware, is that correct?
I was not aware of no billing stopping. Why would I? Why would I be aware of billing?
Were you aware that Team Summit was not paying?
This is, this is, this is badgering.
We'll stop it, we'll stop it right now. I'm sorry, you got me going.
Why are you targeting me specifically?
I'm not targeting you specifically.
You are.
You, you and the mayor are responsible for that, administering that contract.
Go ahead and go back to, pardon me, I'll go back to just buttons and we'll speak one at a time. Councilmember Gronwald?
Thank you. I have one last thing to say about this and then hopefully we can move on. Just for the record, and I want this to be included in the minutes, Councilor Mosley, it was not you who brought it up initially. It was me, as a new councilperson, in December, in the budget talks, I inquired about Park on the River. So just, just so we have that clear. I also spoke with city attorney today on the phone, just to clarify coming into today's meeting, so that we didn't get down in the weeds about things. We have gone over it and over it. There is no reason to be throwing out accusations or rehashing any of that. If anybody was trying to hide anything, Mr. Mayor and the city clerk would not have said out loud and admitted, look, the system wasn't great at that time, it was broken, we're trying to fix it. I also haven't heard Team Summit in any way, shape, or form debate any kind of, we're not going to pay anything, we don't want to settle, we don't want to work this out. So let's keep that in mind as well. So on the first page of what the city attorney has offered us, plus the second page together, that total is $28,622.92.
Plus revenue?
Plus, right, that's what I was about to say. Plus the 25% revenue of events that are listed on page one and page two. That's the information that we're waiting for from Team Summit, which they will get us, and we will come to an agreement of what needs to be paid and the timeframe in which it will be paid. Nobody is disagreeing that there is money owed to the city. Nobody is disagreeing that Team Summit will not try to work it out and pay what is owed. So I'm not sure why we continue to debate this. So let's, let's just move forward in a positive way. You asked why the $1,000 during specific times of COVID, why the $1,000 rent was not being paid or charged. I asked the same question, it's a good question. But I wanted, I came from it from a different angle. I wanted to make sure that we were being fair as a business partner during the times of COVID. So whether it was the CDC or the U.S. Department of Health, they declared a global pandemic from March 11th of 2020 to May 2023. So I think what the city attorney was trying to explain is that in an effort to be a fair business partner, we are only looking at the times, especially in 2021, 2022, that Team Summit held events and we are prorating that rent of $1,000, which would be for a typical average 30-day month. We're prorating those for times that events were actually held. Did I say that right, Mr. City Attorney?
The reason I appropriated during the period when we're not under contract is that the, the theory for trying to recover under that period of time is something called unjust enrichment. And it just, it's, it's grounded kind of in equity and fairness. And it doesn't strike me as fair that we should be invoicing as if Team Summit had the right to use it for the entire month when they only used it for two days.
Because there was no contract.
Yes, exactly.
Right. So we're not charging for time that there wasn't a contract, which is fair. And we certainly want to present ourselves as a city that's physically responsible, but also a good and fair business partner. So I, I don't know how that doesn't make sense to everybody, but that, that seems to be the fair way to do it. Moving forward, we need only specifically speak about what the numbers are and what we can agree on, period, moving forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Williams?
I completely agree with you, Councilmember Gronwald. I think we should move forward positively. And Mr. Mayor and Mr. City Attorney, questions have been asked and answered ad nauseam. We, and I am assuming that there is a plan in place to get us where we want to go. There is really no reason whatsoever to beat this horse to death anymore. So I have utmost confidence and faith in the fact that you have a plan in place and that we can move forward with this. It all makes perfect sense to me. And I, I don't think we need a scapegoat in this situation. And I, for one, am very, very offended that we feel like we have to have one. There's a no smoking gun here. We had a pandemic, for crying out loud. Who came away from that unscathed? Who? It affected every single one of us and it affected Timmons. It affected, it, it affected all of us. We were all affected by the dead gum pandemic and why we have to put our city clerk on trial for something she didn't even know about. And our, you know, our Gloria Timmons, who has given her life to this city, and why, she is not saying she's not going to pay what she owes. Not one time has she said that. She, she wants to work with the city. I've never seen anybody more compliant and ready and willing to put this all to bed, to Timmons herself. So the fact of the matter, this, this, this does not even need to come up again in discussion because I believe that you guys have got a plan in place. We, we got a plan in place until, what, October of next year? And we just need to move forward with that. Coming at, coming at Tina and attacking her is reprehensible. You should be ashamed of yourself, Councilmember Mosley.
Councilmember Mosley?
I'm not ashamed of myself for standing up for the, the citizens of this community and standing up for, for the, protecting our money and our assets and.
You're not doing that, sir. You're attacking one person.
I, no, I'm not attacking one person. I'm attacking, I'm attacking the folks that allowed this to happen.
One at a time, please. There's two of us. Go on, Councilmember Mosley.
Well, I'm going to let it go tonight, but I'm not ashamed of myself for bringing this, this up as an issue.
It's not an issue.
It's, it's, well, it, it's still an issue, but it's, we're, we're on the road to getting it taken care of. And I didn't mean to go off the rails tonight.
To appreciate the fact that they, it is on the road to getting taken care of.
I think we've done enough to not run.
Any additional comments on Park on the River?
No.
Councilmember Holt? Councilmember Holt?
I almost don't know where I am, Mr. Mayor. Aren't we far, Mr. City Attorney, aren't we far enough along in, in what you have to be prepared to make some kind of preparatory settlement on this? I mean, am I missing something here that we need to dig up more in order for you to be able to proceed? I thought we voted last meeting to put you in charge to negotiate. Am I missing that?
Yes, you asked me to get with Ms. Souza and with Timmons to get the preliminary information. And I did reach out to Timmons, and I understand she swamped for the holidays. And she said she would get me the, the revenue information after December 23rd, and I trust that she will.
So that part is in place, we're, it'll proceed after the holiday, if I understood correctly? So.
Then I plan to be back before you with, I guess, a proposed settlement.
As it stands, it stands that you will take charge of that issue.
Yes, sir.
When the door is open. So there's nothing else that we really have to do right now, am I right?
That's correct, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we rely on the vote that we did last meeting and drop all further conversation. We need to take a deep breath and calm down.
Motion to rely on the, so I, I believe the motion at the last, I've got to find my minutes, was very specific and designed to not give sort of that ability. It was designed to piecemeal the process so that we had to come back multiple times and have this conversation. But the, let's see if I can find the specific motion, which is relevant because you want to rely on that. It is the, it was a motion on the floor for the city attorney to get with the finance director in Team Summit to determine what the invoices would be and then to come back and submit that to the city council. So if we're relying on that, I don't know that that sort of grants the, the ability for the city attorney to begin the negotiations. I'd recommend just a motion that the city attorney continue to gather information and then begin negotiations or discussions with Team Summit and then bring back a number to the city council.
Right. There is a process in motion, so we don't need to interrupt that at this point, am I right?
Yes, sir. Yes. I'm just waiting for the, the revenue information. And then I'll come back to you with a number. And I'll break it down just month by month like I did on this discussion draft, and then you all can decide what you'd like to do.
Okay. Done.
Thank you, sir. With that, we'll move on to new business. The first item of new business is Resolution 2023-37, amending the 2023 general fund budget. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
A resolution of the city council of the city of Mammell, county of Pulaski, state of Arkansas. A resolution to be entitled Resolution Number 2023-37. A resolution to amend the 2023 general fund budget.
All right. Councilmember Gronwald, you asked about miscellaneous income and, and revenues. What we have here is some insurance monies that the city received due to damaged police vehicles. The police department's just wanting to use that revenue on new vehicles.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2023-37.
A motion and a handful of seconds. Any discussion on that motion? For, just for the record, the amount was $12,255. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of adoption signify by saying yes. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of adoption signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Resolution 2023-37 is adopted. We will move on to Resolution 2023-38, amending the 2023 general fund budget. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Pulaski, State of Arkansas. A resolution to be entitled Resolution Number 2023-38. A resolution to amend the 2023 general fund budget.
This is basically to make repairs to a walk-in cooler at the senior center. It has had multiple issues and constantly has to be repaired, in some cases, losing all the food that is there. If you want all the details, I do have folks here that can tell you a little bit about that.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2023-38.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Councilmember Mosley?
Just a question here, is there not some other money available in the budget for this? I know this is under equipment maintenance, and there's obviously not enough. But was there any extra anywhere else that, within our guidelines, we were able to transfer over?
Not, well, yes and no. So what they, we actually got the PO going on this currently, and I want to say that money is coming from about five different line items and completely maxes those out. So, because we can't pull it from other departments, it has to come from operating within the senior center, senior services department. So if this is not approved, that can happen, but then we'll be back probably here shortly. I don't remember off the top of my head what those line items were, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional discussion? Did we have a motion second on this? We did. If there's nothing further, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. With that, we will move on to Resolution 2023-39, amending the 2023 general fund budget. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Pulaski, State of Arkansas. A resolution to be entitled Resolution Number 2023-39. A resolution to amend the 2023 general fund budget.
All right, this is for some pretty significant repairs to the city's fleet maintenance service truck. I had a pretty thorough conversation with Mr. Hogan about whether or not this could wait until next year, since they have so many vehicles. What the fleet, fleet maintenance service truck is, is the truck that when our trucks go out, our tractors go out, our mowers go out, is the one responding. It has all the equipment on it that is necessary. Apparently, we pick up screws and nails in the tires of our sanitation trucks fairly frequently when we visit the dump. So it is going out there from time to time, and they said that they really need to get it fixed. Or we can wait, but then if you see tractors on the side of the road, we'll do our best to push them back. I'll go ahead and open the floor for discussion. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, what would, what would, I mean, that's, that's a lot of money for a repair. But what they're doing will make it almost like new again, I assume, for what we use it for. And that's, that's all, I was just wondering if, if it would be, I don't know what a new vehicle that's equipped and tripped out like this would cost, but it may be, if it's well over $100,000, I'd say certainly go ahead and spend this money.
Mr., I don't know that it'd be quite that much. Mr. Hogan, you come on down. It is a one-ton pickup truck, it's a 2001, and so I, I don't know what the new ones are going for now. Mr. Hogan?
A new one would be about $120,000 to equip it out. Takes about a year to get it after the PO's done. And right now, with winter coming on and the snow season happening, this vehicle is low mileage, it has a lot of idle time when it's out on the job for different reasons. So, yeah, I, I think it'd be more feasible to just repair it because it is a low-mileage truck, it is an old truck, over 20 years old, but it's still in great shape. And if we put a new motor transmission in it, it should last us another, at least 10 to 12 years, I would hope.
I think that's a great decision. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gardner?
Motion to adopt Resolution 2023-39.
I've got a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-39. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. That concludes new business, so we'll move on to Mayor's comments. I wanted to point out something pretty fun that I have, that we have going on this year. And y'all may recall that we've talked about Christmas, and the city put some money in beautification where we were looking to be able to do a little more decorating around the city. We put together a Christmas and holiday season task force that has been meeting throughout the year. Courtney Dunn has sort of led that charge, and then met with the Chamber of Commerce, and they have recognized the value in this sort of community development project and have jumped in full bore. And so we have a really exciting lineup of events that we're really trying to make Christmas time special here in Mammell. So y'all should have at your desk the sheet with some of the stuff going on. I'll just hit a few of these. Do you have the, on December 1st, we have the holiday open house with the chamber. There's some community pantry drop-offs, where we're trying to raise some food for those in need. And I think the, that's also the day we're kicking off the holiday display competition, the Very Merry Mammell Christmas Lights decoration. On the second, we have really the biggest day of Christmas in Mammell. We've got the breakfast with Santa at Jess Odom Community Center. There's, the library has their Happy Holidays going on. We have the annual holiday parade on December 2nd, so that'll go from 5:00 until 6:00 p.m. The parade will wrap up at Lake Willistee, as it normally does, and the winners of the floats and different entries get recognized. But then we have a whole lineup of stuff that's occurring, including a tree lighting ceremony at Lake Willistee. Later on in the month, on December 9th, basically every, every weekend, we've got stuff going on that really, you know, I say "we," I'm using "we" a lot. The chamber and its members and the community has really stepped up and helped fund a lot of this stuff. So thank you, Kelly, for jumping in on this. Anyways, the mistletoe market at Lake Willistee, which I believe is an arts and crafts fair, is market... Just a shopping event called the Mistletoe Market at Lake Willistee. And then on December 16th is Holiday in the Park. We've got movie night and a friendly family activities that's hosted by Summit Church. So a lot of exciting stuff going into Christmas, and I hope we, I hope you all turn out and support it, and then I hope it's even better next year. I say that, but I think we'll, I think we want bigger and better... Other comment, the budget meeting schedule is here. I'd hope, I've said this every year now, and if I can keep, if I can get on a new software and keep a finance director, Beatrice will do this earlier next year. But we've got budget meetings on 5th, 7th, 12th. If they're, and, and if necessary, the 14th. If there are numerous people that can't make one of these meetings, let me know. It's, of course, live streamed and recorded on YouTube. And then if you, if just one person or two people's unable to attend, we can phone, phone you in, as we've done in the past. Is anyone looking at these dates and see a big no-no? What date?
Both the 5th and the 7th.
Um...
And I won't be able to phone in.
Is there, anyone else have problems with the 5th and the 7th? Okay, we'll go ahead with those then. You can, you can watch the video and, and just for your, you've been to them before. These will be the department reports on those days. And then there's, there's typically some discussion, but more of the discussion will be on the 12th typically. But it's always, who knows? Anyways, that concludes Mayor's, is that what your light was on for? Are there any councilmember comments? City, oh, Councilmember Holt?
Just want to thank our folks for coming tonight. I'm extremely proud of you for showing your citizenship. I appreciate your enduring patience. You see, this is not a laugh-a-moment sometimes around here. But the government really does belong to the people, and the people have to decide what they want. And so I hope your numbers will multiply and multiply and multiply. Take charge. We work for you. We are your servants. We are not the owners of this city, contrary to popular belief. So thank you for coming, thanks for being here. I wish we could fill this up. We built this beautiful hallway. We used to have about 40 chairs, and that was it. But come again and bring your neighbors. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, great, great comments, Alderman and Holt. I just wanted to compliment the city. I was driving down the first night, it was raining after we had our last meeting, and somebody's put reflectors out there on that curbing, I think, on Mammell Boulevard. And in the rain and in the dark with no moon, you can see those reflectors. So that, that's a great improvement. Thank you for doing it.
Well, and thank you to Mr. Hogan's car. I think I sent them a text message from this meeting, and they were putting them out the next day. So I wish it was always that easy, but thank you, sir.
It was a brilliant solution. Thank you.
City attorney comments? City clerk comments?
No.
If there's nothing further, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adjourn the city council meeting November 20th, 2023.
We've got a motion and a second to adjourn. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you for coming.